Good evening, everyone. We will call the special city council meeting to order for July 31, 2012. And the purpose of this is to discuss the 2013 budget. And our city council president chairs the meeting. So I'll now turn the gavel over to council president Bonnie Peterson. And I will stay here during the hearings as well to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wright will be absent tonight. Are we supposed to get a quorum? Do a that for Charlene Rolkop? Laurenti? Scott?
Here.
Wright? Clayton? Peterson?
Here.
Doyle?
Here.
Lewis?
Oh, here.
Roberts?
Here.
Sasso?
Here.
Nordstrom?
Here.
We have quorum. Thank you, Charlene. One of the handouts that you have here tonight is called Budget Review Tuesday, July 31st. And what I did was I took the questions and answers that we've received so far and lined them up with the speakers that'll be speaking so that you can look and see what answers have already occurred. And I would just remind you that this is, you're the board of directors of the, on the board of directors for the city, and we need to try to avoid micromanagement. And we want to, there will be items that you will want to work on, but some solutions and changes won't occur inside this budget process. For instance, if you want to change the way something's done in a department, it will need to be done outside of this budget process. So, but we will keep a list of those things also that are, that you're interested in. And let's see, if you, we're going to take a break. Let's see, well, whenever potentially, whenever the, let's see, supposedly at 6:45, we'll have a break. That's scheduled, but we could always take one sooner if we need to. Do we have someone here for, to do the invocation?
Her budget?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I think we're pretty much a kind of a study group. And I'm going to turn it over to Charity. She has some things she's put together, and then we'll see if you have any questions. And then we will invite Greta up when it's time. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to give a very quick overview about the intent of tonight versus the rest of the budget hearings that we'll be having. And today is really the time to listen. It's the time to get input. It's the time to ask questions. I guarantee even after tonight, as the information we get kind of percolates for the next week and a half, we'll have other questions come up. And that's why the next budget hearing isn't scheduled until next Thursday, so that'll give us time to really formulate with clarity the things that we have on our minds. Like Bonnie said, we'd really like to get away from years past of real microscopic thinking. That's the job of our management. That's the job of our staff. Our job really needs to be the broader stroke of the city and, you know, complement what our staff does as opposed to repeat what our staff does. Today is also not about really finding solutions. I guess you can kind of think of it like a puzzle. Tonight, we're going to really throw out a lot of the pieces. We're going to take a look at them. Over the next weeks, study and strategize and figure out how they're best going to fit together. So next week, we'll really launch more rolling up our sleeves, trying to find those solutions. And the course of tonight, the questioning and the topics of concern that come up will really guide how the future budget hearings go. I'll be keeping a list of points that we want to consider, major driving questions or problems that we feel we need to solve before this budget is ratified, keeping in mind that what Bonnie said is it's not our agenda to totally restructure how things are done. I mean, our options for ratifying a budget are funding or defunding point blank. If there are other things, we can certainly talk about that. And we'll try to use some discrimination as that, as that goes along, so we know what needs to be handled before we can ratify the budget versus what can be done after we ratify the budget. And those questions, you know, this is going to be a new process for all of us, a new, you know, form of budget. It's kind of a fresh start for everybody, so don't hesitate to ask those questions. And with that, I think we'll just, actually, we could probably get started early. I'll turn it back over to you.
Does anyone have a question right now or a comment? Pauline?
I was just going to let the council know that this also will be different in the fact that we have told the department directors that there will be no formal presentations, that this is merely a time that they are going to be present so that you guys can ask them questions pertaining to their departments. We did not want them, the mayor and I had the conversation, we did not want them to have to be at every single budget meeting by chance that a question might be asked. So this is kind of their scheduled time for questions, but nothing formal will be done because with the format of this budget this year with the budgeting for outcomes, a lot of what they typically would have presented is included in their indicators and things to look forward to and that type of thing. So just to put that on the table now, so you're not surprised when they're not giving presentations.
Okay.
Thank you, Pauline.
Mr. Doyle, did you?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that. So we won't be making any motions tonight. It's just input. It's utilizing staff's time to the best of our ability. And again, you know, if someone's really on a roll and the information is of value and our eyes aren't glassing over, I say we utilize this time as much as we can, including questions, you know, really get that out, start to feel comfortable. No question is a dumb question today. Just we'll keep track of everything. Evidently, there's a dissenting opinion on that one, but we'll keep track of those things. And as they come up in the coming week and a half, we'll just keep adding to that list until we know really what it is we need to tackle in the weeks to come. Thank you.
Yes, and I also didn't know if Mayor Quaker, if you wanted to make a few comments. I applaud you for trying this new budgeting for outcomes because it may not be perfect this year, but it's the way we should be going because we should be able to look and see if all our goals, everything, our budget lines up with our goals. And so that's very important to do that. Does anyone else have any questions or comments before we start? I want you to feel free, there's food in the caucus room. Feel free to go get some and eat. We don't want you having low blood sugar and acting out here in public. I know we often forget that we're on camera, so we'd hate for that to happen. And we are running a little early, and I see that Greta has come, but she may still need a few minutes to get her act together. But we're just, Greta, we're running ahead of schedule, unlike what we usually do. So if you would like to, if you would like to?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I might also preface this with, before the meeting, it was probably about 3:30, I sent out the summary of all the questions and the answers that I have compiled. I know Bonnie had put together this in order of the speakers tonight, which is a good thing to have.
I put them in here.
I do have copies of the questions and answers if anybody from the media wants to see those as well. There are a couple budget books here for people to look at in hard copy. And I know I, when I had spoken with Chad briefly at the picnic for the employees, he commented that he, he didn't, basically that he couldn't, didn't know what questions to ask because a lot of it was so condensed that he didn't know some of the specific things where he was looking. And so I have also done a summary page breaking down what's all combined in this budget book for each of the subsections. So I can hand those out to the council as well. If, that would be okay.
Awesome. Thank you, Pauline. Do you have the separate, the summary from the questions? Because I think I would like to see the summary. The questions, you will have had emailed to you, so, I mean, you're certainly welcome to have all the questions. And I tried to take those and put them in this brief form, format for align with what we're doing tonight. And I see here on our time that we have Library, Greta Chapman et al. And I think that's very appropriate for a librarian to have an et al. with her.
Is it hooked up? Sorry. We do have information as well as far as statistics that are listed within the performance review budget information. And in addition to that, so I guess I'll leave the floor open to what would be most advantageous with the 15 minutes that you've got.
Okay. As you see, there was a question, I think Amanda, that you may have asked. I'm not sure, I'm not, I can't remember exactly who asked all the questions, to see if you need more expansion on that. Does anyone have a question for Greta? Okay. Greta, if you want to spend a little bit of time, if there's something you feel is important for us to know.
Sure. I'll probably ask Board Chair Jim Olson to come up and just speak in highlights to the program, to the indicators that are within your budget book. We do have four indicators, of which there are benchmarks included, and those indicators are directly linked to our strategic plan. I'll also just send copies around of those as well. So I'll ask Jim to just hit some of the high points of those indicators, and then if you have any further questions, we can field those.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greta. Good evening. In our process as a Board of Trustees for the library, we have worked over the last number of years creating a, not only a mission statement, but we have a strategic plan which we use in our, in our making decisions about the plans for the library and setting our annual goals and in setting our budget goals. And in doing so, we've found that it's enabled the library to move ahead and really become a, an active and busy place in our community, where we've, we've been very pleased with the results. I think in addition, it's helped the library to get through what's been kind of leaner times the last few years because we were doing advanced planning and as a result, had made some decisions and some purchases that allowed the library to handle the expanded demand with, without increasing the budget in the process. I think that, as you can see in what's been handed out, the, our outcome-based indicators show that we are following our, our strategic plan and our goals. We address the collections, the programs, and the facilities, all of which are critical to the operation of the library. These are, these are all items that need to be done on a regular basis or the library gets behind. We've, we've found that as a result of having a plan and having our goals, the measurement becomes a much easier process for us, and then as a result, the budgeting does too. We, our second one is to promote the awareness of the library and, and our information services as well as current projects and, and new activities. And I think this really speaks volumes about what's going on in the library. The responsiveness, just look at the number of visits in 2011, and then in 2012, our target was a 5% increase. And we're, we're seeing every year growth in the use of the library because of the fact that the library has stayed up to date in the things that it provides to the community. We have, we have a replacement cycle. We're on, we're on track with that. The community use of the, the public computer use continues to increase. Our materials circulated continue to increase. Our mem, our library cards continue to increase. As we, we look at all of these things, we're really delighted that these things are happening and that we have the ability to, to handle the increased demand. You know, when you, and the other thing that we do is we measure the library, our library, by libraries in communities of comparable sizes around the country. And it's interesting, we are doing more at a, at a more reasonable cost in almost everything that we can measure. Our circulation continues to go up. We have, on average, 68% higher circulation. We have, on average, a higher per capita usage, almost 50% higher than other libraries in similar communities. In, in the last year, we had 389,413 city residents visit the library. So that tells you in a community this size that there are a lot of people that are not just using the library once a year, but are regularly using this facility. It equates out to over 1,000 visits a day. And so the library, between the, the main library downtown and north are busy places. In addition, we're looking at, as you know, opening up the east branch. That should open here in the very near future. The target was August, but it looks like it's probably moving back a little bit because of delays in construction of some of the other parts of the, of the Western Dakota building out there. But the library facilities are moving along well, and we would invite you to, when the opportunity arises, to come out and take a tour with us because it's going to be state of the art in a number of ways, and it, it is really a unique partnership that we have with the school district. And again, a great opportunity for the city and the school to share resources. So we're excited about this. We're, we're not, we've planned very well for this, where we hope that we can continue without asking you for more money just because we're doing this, because we have planned ahead for it.
Okay, well, thank you. I know you have a great library and a great board because, boy, if we could all say we have twice as many patrons as the national average. I mean, that by itself is very, very impressive. Any questions? Mr. Nordstrom?
Bonnie, just a general overview question for Greta. I'm assuming it's Greta, you were present at the budgeting for outcomes. Was there anything of interest that, in that report or that discussion phase that, that drew some particular attention for you?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Sure. The budgeting out for outcome process that we went through and did an exercise on this last call?
In the last nine months or so?
Yes.
So?
Is there anything that came up in that discussion that struck you as an item of interest? The, perhaps the line of questions, the, just the general process and your comfort level with the process itself?
I would advocate that what it has been for the library and the board is taking the next level to the budgeting process. So in our case, because we've had a strategic plan for a number of years, it's taken what information has driven the costs throughout the course of time and put it into a context where I think not only for the trustees, but hopefully for the council as well, gives you a, takes a lot of complex information and puts it into some very concise indicators. I've been involved in this level of budgeting in another time. So to a certain degree, to me, it's taking things to the next level. I think what will make a difference long-term, and I know the mayor has that in mind as well, is what happens next and how the information becomes more refined and how it becomes more integrated into the day-to-day operations. And I think we're off to a good start in that respect. So, and to Pauline's credit as well, between the mayor and finance, they have done their due diligence in bringing it to this point, and that has not been without its complications.
Thank you, Greta. Probably one or two more questions. Have you got it divided out on the shared costs that we have with the county? Have you got that information? I was looking for it, and if I missed it, I apologize. I haven't seen it.
You did not? It is, you have not seen it because the, at this venture, because the process for the contract, which is an ongoing contract, based on a formula of the percentage of library cards in the county attributed to the cost of the city. And that contract number is decided upon the budget that's approved by the city. So to decompress that, once the budget is approved by the council, the formula of 14.5% is calculated for the county's cost, and that approximates lead to be around $400,000. So it's very much driven by the costs that the city occurs for the cost of library services. And that budget is adopted in January of every year.
Understand. Thank you. Appreciate the drilling down into it and getting the numbers out for me. Appreciate it. Thank you. And then one other part of this is the branch libraries that we have in existence now. We've got some more planned for the future, isn't, is that correct?
Yes, there is a design on paper for the west side of town at the West Middle School. And it is in design in the sense of on paper. There certainly would be a number of things that need to take place, including obviously discussion with the west side and the community as well. And so due to the number of projects that the school district is completing, that, that particular project is on hold until they close on some other projects and then come back to the drawing table, look at the bond levels, look at the priority issues within the district, and then hopefully bring that, that conversation back to the table. And let me just also add on the contract with the county library services. The best way I can describe it to you is there is a prenuptial agreement. And what that means is that if that contract should no longer exist, it will not affect the services to the city of Rapid City. So we are very clear about this relationship has good beginnings and it's in a good situation. But if the day should come when that's no longer the case, it will not affect the citizens of Rapid City. We don't have the funding intermingled.
Thank you, Greta. I'll yield the floor.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Sasso?
Thank you, Greta. Just one question, and I think this is probably a little bit more for benefit of council members. One of the things that you have listed is maintain a replacement schedule for library furnishings and equipment to, for replacement. Do you want to, can you talk about that just for a moment and how you've done that?
Sure. A couple of things, as in all departments have been impacted as well as the community at large with the economy. So things have been set aside that were due for replacement, and so that's why you see in our indicators, 66 of a replacement cycle for 2012 and 75% for 2013 to come back up to the levels that we were prior. We have programmed in everything from HVAC to carpeting or flooring to furniture, lighting. I think those are probably the major components. Windows can get kind of spendy at times as well if they get damaged. So at the downtown facility that's owned by the city, we have all of that programmed into a replacement cycle. So that's what those indicators represent. We also have all of our technology programmed into a replacement cycle as well. Pretty much what you see is on, when we buy something, we plug it into a replacement cycle if that is, if that's the case in fact, so that whatever we purchase, we sustain.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Laurenti?
Thank you, Chair. Greta, I had a, just a question on technology. As you know, you know, we've talked, I think, when I first came on the council, and technology was one of the things we talked about in the evolution of that. My further question about that is, as part of your strategic looking forward with the library, its impact on, the technology's impact on FTEs and your budget, can you talk about that a little bit and how, where that will go based on that?
Sure. Again, as Board Chair Jim Olson talked about, we do comparable standards on an annual basis. And FTEs is, is one of the standards that we take a look at comparable to other cities of similar size. We are average. We don't have above or behind or below the numbers of FTEs that we have. But one of the things that we continue to do strategically is to maximize the use of technology, in particular when it comes to labor-intensive processes. So if I'm following the track that you're talking about, Councilman Laurenti, it is, when we went to add the east branch, we didn't add staff. Part of that is because we have a working agreement with Western Dakota Tech to add a full-time student worker. That had to be in the agreement because we couldn't add a whole nother facility and add all those hours and not increase the staffing, but at the same time, because of technology, it didn't have to be a high entry degree position. In moving, we haven't added staff, I believe, I want to say, in 2008, when we added the north branch, we did add an FTE. But we don't project at this point to add staff in the future because of what technology is doing. We have four machines for self-checkout and self-check-in, and virtually that's two full-time FTE. And it's not to say that we're going to have machines replace all of staffing, but because of the way that library services are changing and evolving and the support that we've received from the taxpayers and the council, our projections on FTE are to maintain what we have and to maximize the resources.
Thank you very much.
Pauline?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I need to point out in the library budget, when we took the interdepartmental charges back to 2011, I failed to deduct the charge from the energy plant to the library. And that was actually deducted in 2012 because the energy plant quit doing services for the library. So really, that should be deducted as well. So when it comes time for the final budget, it will be $5,844 that will be reduced in the library's interdepartmental charges, and then the the library's interdepartmental charges, and then the offset would be to the energy plant, so...
Can we keep it? Just needed to ask.
That would be totally up to the council, but I do want you to know that to be proper, because the energy plant is not providing any services, they really should not be getting charged for it. So, that will be deducted from their, from their budget on the interdepartmental charge side.
We won't ask. We've had good support, and the mayor's put things, we had $25,000 basically for recovery from the last three years, and the mayor put forward with the board as well, $10,000 towards it. So, we're only $15,000 behind over the last three years because part of that is we found 150, I shouldn't say found, we worked strategically with technology and found close to $150,000 that we no longer need due to that fact. So, technology is key for us. We just continue to look in that, in that area. The other part, I'll just simply say to, in that respect, is the change in the energy plant was because we put $15,000 worth of HVAC settings, is the simplest way to say it, and what used to be monitored by the, the energy plant is now monitored through the facility's cellphone.
Okay, thank you so much, Greta, for your great leadership. Pauline, could you tell us again what that amount is, 5,000 and...
Things we're talking interdepartmental charges, something else that I would like to do between now and the final reading of the budget is to get rid of the, the general fund to general fund interdepartmental charges. There was a concern that it would have effect on our federal grants, but I've confirmed that with Cameron that no, it would not. And so, that is basically at this point a paper shuffling, and so that will kind of streamline it a little bit. So, when you get the final budget, if you look at the individual departments, the interdepartmental charges will change a little bit because of that. It may look like in total, the budgets went up, but they all net together to be the same amount, so, just to forewarn you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we move on to the airport? Okay, oh, yes, Mayor?
Pauline, for the benefit of the council, could you summarize, when you say a paper shuffle, what, what the general fund to general fund interdepartmental charges meant for your office and why it's so important that we get rid of those?
Give me a second if you would.
Okay, while she's getting those done, I'm just going to let Cameron know that he's going to be up here shortly so that we're running a little bit ahead of time right now, just so you're, just so you're aware.
What it would amount to is the first month of every year, we do specifically each line transaction, whether it's general fund to general fund or general fund to enterprise fund or whatever the schematic is, and then the monthly thereafter, we just do a lump sum for the total. But that first month, when we do general fund to general fund transactions, just in the general fund alone, that's 265 separate transactions. By getting rid of the general fund to general fund, it brings it down to 149 transactions. So, that saves Tracy some time.
That's a month? A month?
We do it the first month individually like that, but then we lump it together as a total per month charge after that, just, and we do that so that way we know for sure how that additional monthly charge is broken down.
So, this saves you approximately 100 transactions a month? Did I get that right?
In January, it would. And then, it would still be the same number of transactions in the, in the following months because we only do one for each cost center then. After that, we total all the charges and just do it one, the one-twelfth of it.
Well, still saving 100 transactions because, you know, when you make a mistake in one, then that takes about another 10 hours to find the mistake, so... So, that's good, be a great time saver. Okay, Cameron Humphries? Cameron, we had put together our, here under the list, someone had asked questions for you, and just going to ask anyone if they want further explanation or if you have any other questions for Cameron with the airport. And if you want to take a few minutes to... Yes, what your commonly asked questions are.
Thank you. And thanks to the council for inviting me down here to talk about our budget. I want to introduce Tony Broom, who's behind me. She did the OMA's work of preparing this budget on behalf of the airport board, and then have the airport board review it, and then submit it to the mayor and the council for approval. Couple of things about the airport that I would bring up is that the airport is a full enterprise fund. What that means is, is that we don't rely on any tax money from the city for the operations and maintenance of the airport. All of the funds for handling the operations and maintenance of the airport is derived through rates and charges for tenants and users of the airport. About half of our revenue comes from both the rental cars and the parking lot. So, the vast majority of the revenue for the airport doesn't come from the airlines, actually, it comes from parking lot and rental car revenue. The airlines account for about a quarter of that, and then about another quarter of the operational budget comes from other rates and charges for airport users. Annually, our operations and maintenance costs are around $4 million. That's the budget that you have before you, is close to $4 million. We're not really looking for a big change in the O&M budget. As a matter of fact, if you take out the wages and salaries and associated benefits out of it, we're actually down by about 4%. And that's by just more efficient use of, of what we're doing out at the airport, both in our materials and our repairs and the like. We've been going through some changes at the airport to try to make the airport more efficient and more effective, and if you take salaries out of it, we're actually, we've lowered our costs. On the capital side, the majority of the capital money that comes from improvements of the airport comes through federal grant programs. The primary one is Airport Improvement Program Grant that is administered through the Federal Aviation Administration. That grant is derived from airport and airline user fees. It's not out of the general tax fund, out of the US Treasury, it's out of the Aviation Trust Fund. That money is redistributed back to airports to help pay for improvements. As a matter of fact, we just got a two and a half, $2.3 million grant for our recent terminal remodel and expansion project. The other main source of capital funding is through passenger facility charges. That's a, another federally managed program, capital improvement program. And essentially, what happens is, is that when a passenger buys a ticket on an airline that's departing out of Rapid City, $3 and, or, I'm sorry, $4 and a half dollars comes back to the airport to help pay for capital improvement projects. Occasionally, the city will step up and, and help pay for capital improvement projects. Noteworthy to that is recently, the, through the Vision 2012, or, I'm sorry, yes, the Vision 2012 program, the airport was given $3.5 million for the $20.5 million terminal remodel project. So, that's kind of a basic overview of our budget.
Okay, great. Questions for Mr. Humphries? Mr. Sasso?
Just for, I think, the other council members, our cost for employment of passengers, if you want to just share kind of where we stack up against other communities on that. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. It's something that we can certainly, as a community, be proud of. One of the key indicators for airports around the nation for how efficient they are is the cost per inplane passenger. And the way that you derive that number is you essentially take the number of inplane passengers and you divide that by how much it costs to keep the airfield running. Our cost per inplane passenger is around $4.50, which is very, very low. Average for an airport, Rapid City regional airport size, is somewhere around $11.30. For all airports, you know, including the, the large airports like Denver International, Minneapolis and the like, you get northwards of $14.50 per passenger. The airport is very, very efficient. The fact that we only employ 27 full-time employees and maintain the airfield top to bottom with those 27 employees and management, and manage it is a very efficient, something that we as a community can be proud of.
Anyone else? Mr. Laurenti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me. Mr. Humphries, if you could, then you kind of alluded to it, but you spoke a little bit about it, but the new expansions to the, to the airport, what's your feel on the, the impact of the your O&M budget there? And does your 2013 budget reflect those, the needs and that type of thing with the new expansion? If you could...
Thank you for the question. When we undertook the project to expand and remodel the terminal building, we took into, into consideration any increases in O&M. There is going to be some slight increases, but not a lot. We actually, by reutilizing the space that we had more efficiently, we, we only had to add 12,000 square feet to the facility. It was at about 88,000 square feet, so we're right up close to 100,000 square feet now. So, we're only adding about 12,000 square feet to the facility, but pushing that facility out another 25 years. In addition to that, we put in more efficient window systems, lighting, faucets, you know, the better quality and low-flow faucets, and it's actually going to help us to not increase our O&M costs very much, and our 2013 budget that you have before you does have that into consideration.
Thank you very much.
Hey, anyone else? Cameron, I have a question for you. You said you get about 50% of your revenue from rental cars and parking lot. That makes me think that it's very important that we protect that property around the airport, and I don't know where we are in those negotiations. Are we still talking about exchanging property there on whatever that road is, the entry there? Is that still being discussed or...
Yes, as a matter of fact, as the council is aware that there is some property that the city owns at Wally Beinum's site, there is some discussions, nothing firm at this point, of trading some of that property for, property that, that Hanny Chaffee owns adjacent to the airport that would be prime property for, for development for airport, and we're currently discussing that. We don't, we don't have anything other than in process right now. What we're doing is we're actually getting an assessment of the property, both properties, to determine their actual value, and then looking at what each one is valued and whether or not trade would be beneficial to both parties.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You.
Okay, thank you.
You.
Next, we have Pauline.
I actually feel like I should be over here during, during my time, so, one of the questions was about our interdepartmental charges, and I appreciate that concern that we only had the cost centers listed, and so Tracy did hand out a spreadsheet tonight that, for the interdepartmental charges, that had both the cost center number and the description of that, so you know who's getting charged what. So, that should, should help you with that determination. If you look in the finance budget for the general fund, that is strictly our finance office, 17.5 FTEs on that. And so, then if you, we have more budgets that we are responsible for under the other special revenue funds. That would be the RSVP program, which is a grant program. In 2011, the city did give them $20,000 from the general fund, and they also began applying for our community investment funds, and in 2011, they received $4,000 from that source as well, and then they are going to receive another $4,000 in 2012. Other than that, they fundraise their money or get grants both from the state and the feds. The other two are the bid districts. One is the hotel bid that the CVB gets the money, the majority of the money for that, and we can discuss that further when the CVB is actually here or at, they're supposed to be here on the 9th of August, and I did send an email out, and they are not able to, so they're going to try to make arrangements with you guys to visit with you. The other, and that budget, the whole budget is about 1.3 million, and of that, approximately 1.2 million actually goes to the CVB for marketing purposes to try and bring either conventions here or visitors here. The downtown bid, the budget is $183,000. That, again, we keep 99% of the assessment. It is actually, the 2012 assessment is actually on the legal and finance agenda for tomorrow, so we're going to be doing that again for 2013. The city receives 1% of that revenue plus any interest and penalties that are received to help with administration costs. And with that, if there are any other budget-specific questions that you don't have answers to or some that you may want to get further explanation, I'd sure be happy to answer those.
As you can see, I lumped a lot of questions under Pauline's section there to... Give us a minute to... Oh, Mr. Nordstrom?
Maybe not so much a budget question, but my, my major concern is for this, this particular department is space, and something that I'm concerned about in, in, just having, where do we put the people? And so, some of the things that, Pauline, I don't know if you're doing it now or are in progress of doing it, but the space issue seems to be a, a growing problem throughout the entire city hall, especially up here on the second floor, but down on the first floor. Are we factoring in something for square footage area for the finance department?
There, quite honestly, in the location that we are in, there is no area in which we can grow unless we take over common areas or school district areas. We are at our capacity for the footprint that we have been given. I want to say back in 2008, there was a staffing study. You know, you talk about space. Back in 2008, when they did the staffing study, at that time, it was determined that finance was actually, I think, either six or eight people short of similar-sized communities doing the similar-sized work. And we were able to add two positions, and so we're still short, I think it was eight back in 2008, and so we're still technically short six. We do manage to squeak by, and the conversation always turns to, even if we were given more employees, where do we put them? Because we are just blank out of space.
Agreed, and I'm just bringing it to attention to everyone so that it's not only in the finance department, but there's some other areas of the city hall that we're, we're starting to outgrow the seams here. So, just an awareness issue. Thank you, Pauline.
Mr. Laurenti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pauline, if you could, and this is just a not-knowing question, this is a rookie question. Can you tell me a little bit about the 2011 budget as far as the timeframe for it to, for an audit to be completed there? And what is...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, that's good.
The audit actually, to meet all of our bond covenants, has to be completed by September 30th, and that's also grant requirements. So, the 2011 audit will be done by September 30th of this year.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Hopefully sooner.
Any other questions? I would just say that our finance department is really the backbone of the city as far as keeping us on the straight and narrow, and appreciate the work that everyone does there and the solid advice that we seem to get. Amanda? Amanda.
Just in passing, you had made mention that there might be a software upgrade coming up soon. Could you just expound on that a little bit? Do you foresee it being in the 2013, or do you think it's going to be out past 2013?
Quite honestly, we have reinstituted a committee to look at our software package for the accounting and administration software. We have IFIS right now, and they will no longer support their system very shortly. They had told us at one time they'd quit at the end of 2011, and they said at the end of 2012. And so we're really not sure at this point when they will quit supporting it. They wanted us to just automatically move to their new product, and at the time, it was all in beta testing mode. And I don't, I'm not a big fan of being a test site because we have our own problems when the software is supposed to work. And so this committee is getting together, we're actually meeting tomorrow, or Thursday, to discuss it again. We would like to have a selection made as far as what software we want to go with in the beginning of 2013. Realistically, it's going to take at least a year to implement it. You know, they may require some payments along the way. Nothing is in the budget currently. We are estimating, and it's a total estimate at this time, about a half a million dollars for this software. I T has committed some funding out of their C I P budget, and the rest of the funding I have some ideas for. I did not include it in this just because I don't know how quickly we'll get on it. I would love to say that I would have something in place by the end of 2013, but quite honestly, it's not realistic. And if we do implement a new software, the last time I want to do the implementation is either at the end of a year or the beginning of a year. We'll have to do it mid-year. So if we can't, I honestly, I see it being implemented in mid-2014, realistically.
Thank you, Pauline. I just know from past experience, it will take a good 18 months because you'll have to run dual systems for a while just so that you can tweak it out. So the implement, or the down payment and stuff, if you are going to start that this year, though, they'll probably want to have some right up front, so.
And I'm hoping to draw that immediate need money from the I T C I P funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I'm sure Pauline will feel free to ask you any questions as we go along.
And that is fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready for Brett Limbaugh. Brett, that's how we keep our staff on their toes, being early for a change.
Great.
We have any questions for Brett to start off with? Brett, maybe if you want to just kind of start with what you, common questions that you're asked or concerns that you have.
Okay. What we might want to do is go over our funding sources for the department. As you know, there are a lot of federal dollars that we take advantage of each year, so let me go over those three portions of the budget real quickly so you understand how those operate. We have a historic preservation commission that is funded, and we're asking, that budget will be $24,410 in 2013. Those dollars go to administrative costs. There are design guidelines that we're going to be working on, public education programs. And our match for that is service hours. So the $24,410 that's in that budget item is coming to us from the outside, and our staff will essentially be in turn providing the service hours to staff. We have a transportation planning budget. About 18.05% of that is the city's match. The remainder comes from pass-through agreement. And then finally, we have air quality. We have a 30% match that we provide and 70% coming from the federal government. We have two other budgets that provide the remainder of our funding. Those come from the general fund. We're looking at budget items 207 and 204. We're looking to combine those two. In 2013, there's no reason for us to keep them in separate budgets, so we'll go ahead and combine those next year's, just be a little bit easier to decipher that information. So that's essentially where our budget is divided. Now, as far as how we staff, we have three divisions. We have what is called the long-range planning division. Patsy Horton is the manager of that, and that takes care of transportation planning and comprehensive planning. We have a current planning division, which Vicki Fisher is the manager of. That handles the day-to-day zoning applications, subdivision applications, and so forth. Finally, there's the building services division, and obviously, that has our building official, our permit technicians, has our building inspectors and plans examiners. So very quickly, that's an overview of the department.
Ms. Scott.
Thank you. Just a real quick question. I know that there were some professional fees that were needed for the Big Sky. Is that also included in the 2013?
You know, the vast majority of the legal fees that we needed for that case have been expended, and it's my understanding, and I'm not sure if Wade can chime in on this or not, that we're nearly done with the Big Sky case.
Mr. Nyberg.
Could you repeat the question?
I'm sorry, Wade. With respect to Big Sky, the legal services, the dollars that we were funding for that, we're getting some incidents that are coming in right now, but for the most part, I think that that lawsuit has been settled, and so we won't be carrying many monies over to the next year's budget for that.
Yeah, as far as the bills, I think that's correct. I don't, I guess I don't know the status of a settlement at this point, but I think that's correct.
Thank you. That's, I was only looking for a budgetary purpose at this time, so just as long as we don't know of any other legal fees that'll be coming up in the 2013 period.
No, we don't have any planned.
That's all I was asking. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Or I'll cross our fingers. Mr. Nordstrom.
Maybe just a general question, and again, this comes back to interdepartmental charges or maybe even stretching it into the P I L T, Payment in lieu of Taxes. Brett, are you experiencing some interdepartmental charges that we should be looking at a little bit closer?
Well, I don't think that there's anything out of the normal. You know, we certainly have the base charges that all the other departments are getting assessed. Whether or not I agree with that program, I would say no. I don't think it's a good use of our time, but there's nothing out of the ordinary.
Thank you, Bonnie. And maybe it's just something that we can take a little bit further look at down the road on this. For me, specifically, on the P I L T.
The P I L T?
The Payment in lieu of Taxes issue, so.
With that, Richie.
I thank Brett for reminding me about that.
Okay, Pauline.
Pauline is.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Community planning and development services actually does not get charged for the P I L T taxes. Those are just basically for the enterprise funds that receive, you know, the fire service, police service. The taxes, like, they're a form of interdepartmental charge, but it's for the, in case you need the fire service, in case you need the police service, in case it snows and you need your street plowed in front of your business, that type of thing. So with them being in the general fund, there is nothing for them to be charged on the P I L T.
Mr. Nordstrom, are you, just wanted to look in that for?
Yeah.
For all P I L T for the enterprise funds? Okay.
True, and I totally understand that the general funds slash the enterprise funds are the only ones that are in the P I L T. So I do understand that part of it, but I just, as a general overview of the whole process, and I want to thank Brett for reminding me of that question. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Sassa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question, and I'm just trying to remember off the top of my head, and I'm not coming up with it, but the comprehensive plan that, looking at redoing, what are we looking at as far as the price tag on that again, and then funding for that?
Okay. We're asking for $100,000 in the 2013 budget to be brought forward. Council just recently transferred $15,000 in parks budget for the parks portion of that comprehensive plan. As part of the transportation, federal dollars that come in, obviously, there are transportation elements within the comprehensive plan, so we'll be looking to add dollars to the 115 that we would like to reserve. What we want to do is be somewhere within the range of about $200,000 to $250,000 in order to get a consultant to commit to essentially a one-and-a-half to two-year process to get that done.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Limbaugh. Police, Steve Allender. Does anyone have questions for the police chief? We have kind of the question and answers that were, you had given earlier on our sheet here, so. And if no one has questions right off the bat, okay, so you want to tell us what your concerns or highlights that you want to give us?
Yeah. I have, I think of the questions that I've received from the council. Best way I can really sum them up and tell you what I need to tell you is with a few short slides.
Okay.
Some of the questions that I think are most important is questions about staffing, workload, that sort of thing. So first of all, I'll just show you this real briefly. Crime is going up in Rapid City, and I don't have a real good handle on exactly why, but the fact is it's going up. And over this seven-year period, I'm cutting off the bottom of the slide here, but it's burglary, motor vehicle theft, and something else.
It's the purple one. It's the one we want to know.
Yeah. So property crime is going up in just about all categories. Also, violent crimes are going up. The one that's the most disturbing, I think, is in the purple. It's aggravated assaults. If you look back to 2005, we had 160, and in 2011, we had 280. And this isn't just a matter of us writing the report differently or classifying crimes differently. This is after our reports have been scrutinized by the federal government and classified according to their standards. So it's all a very uniform process. But violent crime is going up. The rapes are quite disturbing, from 58 in 2005 to 103 in 2011. And so I'm showing you these things just to show you that these are symptoms. Next, I'll show you the calls for service. Calls for service are going up on the calls initiated by the public in the red. You can see in 2007, we're just over 60,000, and then 2011, we're about at 87,000. Now, these are calls, these red calls are the calls where a citizen picks up a phone and calls and requests service from us, either on the 911 line or the non-emergency line. These are calls we respond to. The officer-initiated calls are the one that's most telling to me because we intend, with new programs and new initiatives, this is our proactive work. This is where we measure our competitive advantage on the criminal and on the crime rate itself. So we're up and down all across the board. We're just floundering here in the use of our officer-initiated calls, our discretionary time. And what I believe from talking to the officers and looking at the statistics, our discretionary time is dwindling. So our workload's going up based on increased crime and increased calls for service. Now, I worked up a little ratio here to show you how we're staffed. We measured police officers per 100, or per 1,000 citizens. Rapid City is staffed at 1.69 officers for every 1,000 citizens, where the national average is 1.8. And 1.8 assumes an average workload, average crime, average calls for service, but we find some agencies are commonly 2.0 to 2.5. So what does this mean? It means that to achieve 1.8, and that is the national average, we would need to add seven FTEs today. And I'll, and as you know, if you've been looking over the materials, and I assume you have, we've been adding officers just about as often as we could through grants. And that's about, that's the only way we've really even requested FTEs, is through grants. Some of those grants are coming due now, and the city is assuming the bills. So what I'm really doing here is two things. I'm telling you today why it's important for us to keep the grant officers that are now being funded fully by the city, and that in the future, we're going to have to do something to get our workload, worker ratio in check. So we'd have to add seven today. To achieve a 2.0 for 1,000 citizens, we would need to add 21 police officers today. So I'm talking adding seven, just to add seven. Those seven and their workload may require, it's possible that could require one additional support person. But on the other end of the spectrum, to achieve a 2.0 and bring on 21 police officers, that is going to require about another five additional support personnel of some sort because these people make their own work and they create the need for support services within the agency. So factors that should influence this ratio are the population change, and in Rapid City, we've been slowly creeping up in population every year, and the crime rate, which occurs to me to be higher than average. So crime rate versus workload, this is a unofficial self-made statistical analysis right here. I'm not going to vouch for the scientific nature of it, but it's a good illustration for you. The Rapid City police staffing is 44% of that of Sioux Falls P D, and we're talking police officer positions. We are 44% the size of Sioux Falls P D. So if we were to have a comparable workload that they do in Sioux Falls, we would have 44% of the crime and 44% of the calls for service. If everything, all things equal, everything we have would be 44% the size of Sioux Falls. So I just used this one here, this is a self-initiated arrest generally, but I used it because it's close to 44%. Rapid City has 50% of the DUI arrests of Sioux Falls. So we have half the DUI arrests, but we have less than half of the staff. So this actually represents a 6% increased workload. Do you see, you get my drift on this, what I'm trying to illustrate? So that's on DUIs. We have 57% of the motor vehicle thefts. So now we're up to a 13% increased workload. And a motor vehicle theft, that work involves, as you can imagine, taking that report, taking measures to locate the vehicle, arresting and prosecuting the offenders and so on. We have 78% of the robberies of Sioux Falls. We have 92% of the rapes, and we have 108% of the aggravated assaults. We actually have more numbers of aggravated assaults in Rapid City than we do in Sioux Falls. Now, I don't say this to tell you that Sioux Falls is lazy or doing anything wrong. I think we all envy, you know, our department envies Sioux Falls and the workload that they have. I called the chief and talked to him about this, and he said it would be nice to have more, but they can't complain. They have a fair workload. So I'm just illustrating that our officers are working hard, and I believe now, and honestly, this evidence has just come together in the last couple of weeks, I think the evidence points to the fact that we've reached our saturation point, and we're starting to lose the one thing that's so precious to us in providing service to the community, and that is discretionary time. Time where the police officer is free from a call and can go initiate a contact at a citizen's house, can check on something that wouldn't normally be checked on, and so on. And when we lose that, we're going to be in a big problem. So, and I don't say this next part to be sarcastic at all, although if you know me, you might think that. But what we need here is a multi-year staffing plan because I think we have done a lot with the use of grants, and we should use grants occasionally, sparingly. My position is to get us out of hawk now with the federal government before we start more rounds of grants. The compliance issues and the paperwork and the multiple officers coming off of grant funding all at once, I think is a little confusing and awkward. So we need a multi-year staffing plan. It, it can't be put off forever, we'll see bad results if we put this off. And there's an alternative, and I'm not being sarcastic about this, but the alternative to staffing up to meet the need is to cut services. And they would be services such as these. We haven't analyzed these specific calls, but it would be these things that we might put in the nice-to-do category or less-than-absolutely-essential category. So honestly, we don't want to do that, and I don't believe anybody wants to do that, the citizen or the governing officials. That's it.
Well, Chief, you've gotten our attention, we've got a lot of questions here. Alderman Nordstrom.
Just one of those curious people, if you will. I'm the one that generated the question about all the grant funding staffing positions, and I want to thank the, the staff people that put this report together, and I haven't had a chance to drill down into it very deeply, but this, not, this department was the primary concern of the grant funding for the, I believe it's called the COPS program, and yes, the COPS hiring grant program. And when those grants are ending, and when, when and what we will have to do for replacements, or if we do go that direction, and how we're going to fund those staffing positions. So hopefully I'll get, be allowed to get, drill down into this a little bit farther, and we'll come, I'd like to come back with some more questions later on the, the grant positions.
About, for the police department or for everyone?
For everyone that's been in this report. I don't know if you've got it in front of you, but essentially, it's this report here, it's quite lengthy, and, and personnel put it together, and I just need to take a little bit deeper look at to it.
You want to put that on the list about the, you're wanting to look, you have
There's, there is quite an extensive list.
Information about the grants to look for.
Yeah, grant-funded positions. My original question is, how many do we have that are in this situation? And there's a report here with that data.
Citywide.
Yeah, and I, I just got this information tonight, so I
Okay.
Need a little more time to
Okay, great.
Study it.
Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Steve, how are you tonight?
Good.
I know how good you are with facts and figures and statistics. So I wanted to ask you, on these ag assaults, how many are repeat offenders, or do you know?
I don't know specifically how many of those are repeat offenders.
Is there any way we could get that information, just out of curiosity more than anything, I guess? But I know from my position of seeing the same people over and over and over and over again for many years, that I honestly believe that some of our, some of the ways to curb these problems are enforcing some of the, punishing people for doing the crimes. I think that that's going to come hopefully to fruition after the first of the year with a new state's attorney. I'm hoping that we actually give some of these people a little bit of time for doing some of these crimes. So anyway, if you could get those stats, I'd love it. If you can't, I can understand that, too. So, thank you, Steve.
Okay.
Repeat offenders? Is that what you're saying? Okay, Alderman Lewis.
Thank you, Chief Allender. Quick question for you, and I'm kind of putting you on the spot here, but how do you foresee, if we, if we would go ahead and take the mayor's recommendation, I'm not, not taking CPI this year, or 2010, 2013, 12, excuse me, how do you see that affecting your department and your ability to police the city?
Well, I, I believe I'm just sounding a warning tonight. I'm not coming to you telling you we have an emergency staffing issue that has to be dealt with right now. My, my concern is that when we, if we push this off for many more years, oops, many more years, that it will become a crisis. But the question is, you know, when to start it and how to start it. And I haven't drafted a staffing plan, but I can tell you, for the last five years, we've done everything we can do, everything we know how to do to make better use of the personnel we do have. We have stopped some functions that soaked up a bunch of employee time. We've put as many resources back in patrol cars and on the road as we possibly could. And so, so anyway, we're prepared to police this city in 2013 on the budget that you have in front of you. But I think we're going to need some help after that.
Alderman Sasso.
The animal service calls, how much do you guys, would you miss them if we were able to figure out how to get the Humane Society to take over, or?
If, if you could do that, you would be elected the new police chief. Well, we wouldn't miss them, but, you know, realistically, there is a major issue with handling these calls around the clock, 24 hours, and bad enough during the day, but at, you know, 2:00 in the morning or 3:00 in the morning when we have them. Well, I'll have to be honest, from about noon or 2:00 in the afternoon, these type of calls are holding for 30, 40, 50 minutes routinely, and that wears on the complaining parties a little bit. But we, we do need to, we do need a better solution for animal calls, but we also need a better solution for a lot of calls like animal calls, similar to animal calls.
Just, just knowing that's something that Humane Society, I think they've thought about, if they can get the funding to be able to provide 24/7, and just thinking that that might be a little more cost-effective and help, help you out just a little bit, even though I think you, I, you might miss some of those, maybe, maybe just a little, but, okay, thank you.
Alderman Laurenti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief, if you would, one, one of the questions in the handout that we have from some of the questions that you field, that there was some, a table that was provided for turnover. And I wanted to ask you, in light of some of the conversation that you've had already with us on workload, what's your sense of the workload and its impact on turnover?
Well, that's an excellent question, because like it or not, when an employee leaves, he or she is slightly worried about the recommendation the employer he's leaving will give him. So they're very, they're very polite in their exit interviews, so we get a different story in the hallways than we do at Human Resources. In the hallways, they leave because of wages and benefits and workload. On paper, they leave for better opportunity for their family, or get closer to family or whatever, so it's really hard to analyze it from my level at least. But I can tell you that for 27 years I've been here, the number one complaint from the cop on the street is being staffed too lightly.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Alderman Lewis.
Thank you again. So, Chief, excuse me, going back kind of my original question, how much, do you have any ballpark figures or numbers for us, and how much it would cost us to get to, you know, the full-time employees that we've talked about with your plan? Have you worked on those numbers yet?
Well, roughly, to add seven FTEs today to get up to the national average would be around $350,000 in wages and benefits to start with, and approximately another $20,000 to $25,000 in equipment.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Scott.
Hi, Chief. On the 2013 budget, does it already include the city picking up the grant money that's going out? The officers, the FTEs that?
Yes, all the, all of the employees, even the ones that have been defunded beginning in January of 2013, are in the budget, they're all accounted for. So our budget looks very similar to other years, but the revenue, our projected revenue is down.
All right. And what's the projection of the grant money for the FTEs running out? Is it over a five-year period? Is it phased out, like, pretty evenly, or?
The typical arrangement for the police officer hiring grants that we get is, we get a percentage of funding. Lately, it's been 100% of, of the funding for three years, and the city is required to pick up the funding for the fourth year, and then there are no strings attached for the fifth year.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Clayton.
Chief, I'd like to know, based on this need for further officers and, and where we sit in terms of the national average, has that impacted at all, the reaction time when there's calls for backup?
Calls for backup, no. Officers will drop whatever they're doing and, and back up the other officers. It has perhaps caused a slight delay in the responding time on run-of-the-mill calls for service, but, no, it's hard to, it's hard to say that the staffing level hurts the officers' available backup. It's hard to, I think you could, I think you could get a yes vote on that from one of the guys, or one or two of the guys on night shift, but it, you know, it may be in an instance. I mean, we, we have them where, and these are just occasionally, where an officer will call for help, but everyone else who called for help first has a more pressing situation. But we do have good support from the Pennington County Sheriff and the Highway Patrol as well that are in town.
Well, it, it sounds like what you're alluding to is, as we become short-staffed, if I could use that term, that our police department becomes more reactive rather than proactive, and that proactivity begins to diminish to the point of disappearing. And it would only take one instance of a need for backup that doesn't arrive in time or it's just not suitable, and then we, as a community, have placed you and, and your team in jeopardy.
Well, that's, that's certainly a possibility. And I guess you'd have to do a ride-along to see how this works in real time. But the, the chief complaint of the police officer is not that he can't get help, it's that when he arrives at that call, he's by himself, and he doesn't feel comfortable to. But he knows everyone else is busy, so he goes by himself anyway. And that's the, that's probably the biggest threat to the officer's safety.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is kind of a staffing level question as well. Chief, if you got an, have you got an update for us on the K-9 unit?
We have three K-9s, three K-9 units up and running, and they're all trained and certified.
I was just curious, maybe a couple of components to that question would be the, the cost of one of those dogs, and then are we getting to the point where we need a fourth, a fourth unit?
That's a good question. The K-9 officer is, is slightly limited on the type of calls for service that he will respond to or can respond to. He can't transport prisoners in his car if he wants them to remain intact. And those officers are slightly more expensive because these dogs are, are very expensive to maintain. So, you know, we, we have currently three K-9 units, and we're paying the price of having about four police officers. So we've, you know, on paper, really, you could say we've given up a police officer position so that we could have these three K-9s. So again, we considered reducing the K-9s, we went through a trial period, and, and it was only then that we really got to see the value of these K-9 units. So it's possible. It's a, you know, it's a balance. We're in the business to try to find the balance between having someone who can handle 1,800 calls for service in his, in his year, to where maybe a K-9 will handle half or two-thirds of that, or something of that nature. So it's a balance, but something that would, you know, sure they would love to analyze.
Thank you. How are you, the floor?
Anyone else have questions?
I have a question for you, Chief. You had mentioned the misdemeanor crimes, about possibly not going to those, like, what type of crimes are misdemeanor crimes?
Thefts and vandalisms and trespassing and minor crimes of that nature. And I, and I put that up there, that's probably the most drastic of all the examples I put up there, because we see them, we see departments doing that, but there, but there are cities like Oakland, and it is really a black mark on the city when that type of thing happens.
And when you said seven, you're talk, you're talking about keeping the four, the ones from the federal grants, and then adding seven?
Correct.
Is that, okay. And I know Brian had sent an email today about Rapid City being in the number 10 on best small cities for aging, but Sioux Falls was number one, and they mentioned their high economy and, you know, so it's not, you know, crime is related to jobs, and I mean, you know, it's a vicious cycle of things that we need to try to, to do. Okay. I wanted to tell you that my, a man walked in my neighbor's back door the other night, walked through her house, and when he saw her, he started running, trying to get out the front door. But anyway, so the, I called the police, and they did come, which was good, but they looked like they were 12, so. To an old lady like myself, but they were very nice, and, but, but, you know, it sounded like that kind of situation, that maybe they wouldn't respond to that because no real harm had been done, you know, he came in and he left. But yeah, that was real unsettling, you know, for my neighbor and even for myself, and all.
Don't misinterpret, don't get in, in your heads that I'm throwing these things up here trying to blackmail or threaten you or anything like that, but these, I mean, if there's an alternative to staffing up, whether it's this year, next year, three years from now, the alternative is to cut back on the workload, and the only other way they can do that is to cut back on how we respond, so.
Okay. Well, we'll certainly have that topic to explore, and I'm sure we'll be talking with you more on that subject. So thank you very much. And now the time we've all been waiting for, we're going to do a 10-minute break. Let me six, 6:40, and we'll still be ahead. And we have Brian Malewski for Civic Center. And if you can be looking at your questions or see if you got your questions answered, and you certainly may do what you wish. Brian, it doesn't look like there's any questions for you right now, so if you want to just kind of tell us what you think of the highlights of things that we need to know, or any concerns you have.
We, as you look at the Civic Center budget presented before you, it shows about a 1%, a little bit more than 1% increase there, trying to hold our costs in line, projecting similar revenues. 2013, we're projecting to be very similar to 2012. 2012's been a very successful year for us so far. We're looking at keeping the same amount of FTEs. Basically, what you're looking at in front of you is a budget very, very, very similar to what you have for 2012.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Mr. Nordstrom.
Sure, I'll lead it off here. We'll take a chance and see what happens. See if we generate some other ideas. Mike, again, it's just an overall general question for Brian. On the expansion part of it, just thinking out loud, and I've never approached anybody else on this idea or anything like that, so I'm just thinking out loud here. What would happen if a contingency, and I'll even include myself in that other contingency, to come forward with another request for another economic development impact? So it would be, I'm going to say, an independent study. What would be the initial reaction, number one? And then if I came to you for a little assistance on the funding for that economic impact, just look for a little reaction from you. Thank you.
The council obviously can, you know, as a council member, you can fund as you see fit. The Civic Center spent, I think, about $48,000 on the economic impact study that we did from AECom. And AECom is the same firm that did the Sioux Falls economic impact study. So the background for AECom is they're one of the largest firms in the world and they do these quite a few places and we feel comfortable with the information that they provided, so.
Yeah, I've just had a few examples of people uncomfortable with the AECOM report or ACOM report and I guess, right now at this stage, I'm just thinking out loud, I'm not advocating anything or anything along that line or finding a funding source yet, but I'm just getting the feedback right now from a few sources that are not comfortable with the ACOM report. That's why I'm suggesting this.
I know we're dying to ask Brian lots of questions about the expansion, but if we could keep our questioning to this year's budget and we'll have plenty of time to ask him other questions, that would be good. Alderman Lewis?
Thank you. Just a quick question on item 4250, repairs and maintenance. We show a $58,000 increase for this year, request for this year. If you could please explain to me what that'd be for and thank you.
If you don't mind, Tracy Heitch, Assistant GM in Charge of Finance, is going to answer that question.
Thank you very much. The repair and maintenance is a factor of the age of the facility. We have seen, we keep records obviously for multiple years and that's unfortunately one of those factors that continues to increase pretty substantially percentage-wise as we move over the course. I think we took a look at the last eight to 10 years and it was a substantial increase each and every year. One of those things is trying to prevent as many issues as possible, but obviously with the age of the facility, we're going to experience, continue to experience those increases.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay. Well, thank you, Brian, for coming.
Thank you.
Just don't mention GAGA. Okay, let's see. Parks and Recreation. We've got Lon and...I'm sorry, sir, I don't remember your first name.
Doug.
Doug?
Doug Lowe is our Recreation Division Manager. I'm Lon Van Dusen, interim or intern, Parks. Yeah. Intern. Yes, thank you. Madam Chairman said, no, there's no such thing as a dumb question, but I know she can't vouch for the answers, so. Not your, my answer.
That works both ways. Now, we realize that you are kind of put here under pressure, so. Let's see, I think we have, someone have a question to start with? Alderman Lewis?
Hey, thank you very much. Just recently had the pleasure of being appointed to your committee and I really appreciate the work you folks are doing. Quick question for you, it was brought up at your last committee about watering for La Croix links, excuse me, La Croix, yeah, La Croix links, right? We're subsidizing that currently from money that could be spent probably on the Meadowbrook Golf Course, improving that, is that correct? And could you kind of maybe, for the benefit of the others here, kind of explain what we're asking for here?
Okay. Doug Lowe, Recreation Division Manager. What we have right now at La Croix is we are funding La Croix's water at $30,000 a year. This is per an agreement that was signed with the contract with the YMCA for taking care or taking over La Croix Golf Course. The current contract with stipulations of being able to add a few years on as long as the contract and the agreement's going good could last till 2031, is what the contract was signed through. Where that money comes from is it comes out of actually Executive's Development Fund and what ends up happening is when Executive loses money, then they take, then we look at taking money out of the Meadowbrook Development Fund to offset that loss. So in retrospect, what ends up happening is, for the most part, we take $30,000 out of the Meadowbrook Development Fund to pay for that water.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for the other floor if you have any other questions? One other question.
Alderman Sasso?
Go ahead.
The restaurant, looking at that and I guess some of the options that are available right now, what is the cost that you're looking at for running the restaurant is about 3, was it 387,000?
And that is running the restaurant as a year-round facility. There's other options that are out there where we could run it as a seven-month facility, not running it during the winter time, so it runs with the golf season. There's an option out there of being able to run it just like a concession stand and not really running it as a restaurant, but the budget that you have before you is running it as a 12-month bar and grill.
Thank you.
Mr. Clayton?
Lon, I guess we just need to start this discussion. Lon certainly knows and most of the people on the council probably don't, but my first foray in the city government was gaining a seat on the Urban Wildlife Committee after basically throwing rocks at the program to remove deer from the city. I've gone through it with a fine-tooth comb and forgive me, I didn't bring any of my paperwork, but in the plan for deer removal in the city, it says that the city council will set the fee, the per-deer fee. It's currently at $65 and I don't know who to direct the question to, certainly not you, Pauline, it would have more to do with pay, but we're not paying that $65 per deer as a fee, we're paying it as full-fledged pay. So out of that, or along with that comes FICA and benefits and all those other things. So instead of $65, we're actually paying $78 per deer. Using those figures, last year there were 200 deer killed in the city. It took 21 trips for the two sharpshooters to go out there and remove these deer, assuming eight hours, and these are guys who have a full-time job, they go out after hours. So assuming that they took eight hours on each one of these trips, it came down to the point where we were paying them, as a city, $45.96 an hour to go out and kill deer. I'll just be candid and say I think it's ridiculous. It's way, way too high. It shouldn't be paid as pay and I don't mean to throw you at all under the bus, Lon, but if there's something you can say, I know you've got your own feelings about that program, so I'd like to hear your feedback in terms of what we are paying, the success of it, even the reason. We've gone 16 years, I think, is the figure and we've never had a stated purpose for why we remove deer from the city and that's only begun to be formulated as of yesterday when John Kanta, the game biologist for Game Fish and Parks, gave us the beginning of a purpose statement so that we, as a committee, will be able to put together some meaningful plan. And Lon, let me turn it over to you and forgive me for... You hit me later.
No. You know, I agree with you. I think it's time for the committee at least to propose a purpose or a reason why we're doing it other, you know, other than, I guess, in the past, but we've been justifying it by saying, you know, the citizens of Rapid City through a ballot initiative asked the city to have some kind of a deer management program. And we did work with the state Game Fish and Parks and trying to develop a program, taking the recommendations from the Deer Committee that was put together in 1995 and they, you know, put together some pros and cons about relocation and trapping and, you know, looked at various different methods and techniques for managing the deer and we kind of, we, I guess, the council settled on the bait and, you know, the bait and shoot method for that. And honestly, I would say the cost per head that goes to the sharpshooters maybe was somewhat arbitrary, arbitrarily set, you know, because we didn't really know how to establish a fee for that. And because they all started out, I think we started out with a dozen sharpshooters in the inception of the program and they were all city employees at the time and we wanted them to be employees of the Parks Department where they were conducting that program. So that's how the, you know, the salary schedule was set up at that time and of course, we had to pay benefits on that, on those salaries as well. Now, I can't say for sure at this meeting how many hours are spent out there with this program. I know there's some nights they go out and, you know, don't harvest any deer or maybe one or two and some nights where they might do 10 or 20, so. So that part of your question, I'm not sure that I am comfortable enough to answer as far as what we pay, you know, how you would prorate that per hour that they're out there working, I guess.
That's fair.
That I don't know for sure.
I just, I was trying to find some meaningful measurement for what apparently had been decided upon by a council, I'm guessing, years ago, and I don't think the numbers have ever been looked at again. I was the one who requested a spreadsheet of sorts and it looks like, you know, in total, we've spent $346,000 to remove deer. What little bit of informal studies have been done, it hasn't done anything to mitigate deer car collisions. Nobody is keeping track of citizen complaints, so we don't know that we're satisfying anybody by removing these deer from any parts of the city. So there's a lot of things that certainly need to go into a plan where there needs to be a single focal point for entertaining complaint calls if in fact, that's going to be a reason to remove deer. But it got expensive to the point of about 11, I'm sorry, for a five-year period, those calls were counted, there were 108 calls, it seems to be over a six-year period. It averaged out to 18 calls per year and at 18 calls per year, we were spending about $1,300 per complaint to go out and remove deer. So this certainly needs to be looked at. I know it's just a drop in the bucket when we start talking about $135 million budget, but it's just one of those things that's gotten away from us. The finger's pointed at the council for setting the fee. Why it's paid as salary and not a fee is beyond me, I don't think that's right. And, you know, I want to be part of the solution, so I've asked to remain on that committee to continue to work this, but in the meantime, it needs to be looked at, certainly.
Okay. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Oh, and if, I'm sorry.
Should we, well, I was just going to ask you if we should put this on, you know, for future...
I don't know that there's a line item here where we can even see it, but it's one of those things that if we as a...
Do we know what is set aside for the deer management program or?
There is a line item for deer management, but the bulk of the money that's spent on the program actually comes out of 4110, the salaries line item. And I'm not sure what that is. I think, you know, I think we kind of budget kind of a figure of around $22,000, I think, each year.
$22,000, so.
That's going to be dependent on the number of deer and this year, we were down to 200. In previous years, it was 300, so it'd be one and a half times that, just based on the amount that we're paying, you know, as a reward for these deer, so that's going to be up and down too a little bit. And then I might add, if I may, the ballot initiative, and I know people would like to say, "We, the people of Rapid City, voted to mandate a deer management program." The ballot issue, and I went and got a copy just to make sure, the ballot issue was one to support it, to allow it, but not to mandate it. So it's two different schools of thinking. It doesn't say we have to, it just says we can if there's a need and the need has never been addressed.
Okay, I would recommend that we probably proceed with it like this, pull it out of the budget part, but that, I mean, that we're, because it's going to be something that'll have to be dealt with over time to look at it. Pauline?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to point out, I'm not sure when that election took place, but even beginning back in 1996, based on the number of deer that was harvested that year, we've never been less than $100 per deer for cost-wise, if you look at the cost versus the number of deer harvested. So I'm not sure who set that fee or if that fee's ever really been paid out as that fee or what the process has been to this point, but it's never been at that cost.
There were some other, and do you mind, Lon? Let me jump in because...
Go ahead.
And Lon, at the end of the year, put together a report. It was relatively short, but very, very appropriate. In answer to what you said, Pauline, in the beginning years of this program, we paid not only to kill deer, but we paid to process deer and then that deer processing, I mean, where they're cut, wrapped and frozen and now it becomes meat instead of just a dead deer, that went away and now that no longer happens. What they have is a program where citizens can opt to take one of these harvested deer and it's up to them to have it harvested. So it's a little bit of apples and oranges as we compare early years to later years and then not only is there pay to these guys who go out and shoot the deer, but because they use city vehicles, there's city vehicle costs, there was some other personnel costs that were added in there too. So there's several different lines in terms of that budget beyond just the fee to shoot the deer. So it's something we'd have to look at as a report. I know they're out there because Lon's the guy who had to put them together year after year, but there are things in there certainly, other than just the harvesting of the deer.
Okay, so let's just bring that back and we can decide if we want to defund it for this year or just keep the funding and then just see if we're going to change, what changes we want to make. Ryan?
So do we want to, I guess, through this process, do we want to be looking at and bringing forward items that we're, I think, are worth discussing when we're looking at? Okay, so let's add the Meadowbrook Bar and Grill on there, just because as I'm thinking about different needs that we have and trying to get us to a point of covering some of those, I think that might be worth exploring.
Do you have a, Doug, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to make another comment about the different ways of running the restaurant. The golfers, us, ourselves, that's part of the enterprise fund. Neither one of us want to lose money, just like subsidizing the $30,000 of La Croix. So our task was asked to come back in September to see if it's even worth... asked to come back in September to see if it's even worth running in future years. So I'm glad that you're putting it on there because it's going to be something that we're, as a staff, are going to decide if it's even worth it by September anyway, too. So.
Okay. Just a sec before we get away. Any more deer comments or questions?
No, I.
Because I don't want us to go back and forth a different.
No, I was just thinking animal control again, throwing that back in there. So even though we're not on animal control, we're on deer.
I think animal control is already on our list.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone want to talk about Meadowbrook Golf Course? I mean, the, the Bar and Grill before we, I'm just trying to, we could be bouncing back and forth. Okay. So, Mr. Lewis?
Thanks. We talked about this a little bit earlier, but, and I didn't get to finish up with my question. I guess I should have. We're taking the $30,000 out of the Meadowbrook Golfing Fund, or, correct me on the term.
Development Fund.
Development, thank you. So are we neglecting the course in that regard then, too? And are there things that need to be done in the course? Are there, anything in this budget that's being done this year to upgrade the course, to make it more playable, increase playing timing, and therefore, therefore increase revenue? Are we losing revenue, I guess?
Basically, when you take money out of the development fund, you're, you're taking $30,000 of operations, whether it's buying new equipment, putting new seed, new things that we could do with greens. So anytime there's money coming out where you're not getting anything back for it, yeah, it's hurting you.
Do we need to discuss, can we add that? Well, I was just wondering if we should add that to our discussion as far as the, trying to supplement the $30,000.
Or the water, do we have the water?
The water on, is that on there? Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, just so you were, one of the conversations that Doug and I have had is if this is something that should be funded strictly from the general fund as more of a community investment type fund where we would pay the water bills through the, through that process versus taking it out of the golf course enterprise fund.
Okay. I was going to ask Mr. Roberts if you know when that task force is going to be meeting again, or?
Hopefully, the end of the month, we'll set another one up. And I was going to say that some of this stuff is going through the resident, or through the recreational watering task force. We'd like to combine a lot of this money back into, if not all of it, back into the general fund where it's more appropriate to be at, rather than coming out of these enterprise funds. But that's not the question that I have. So.
Okay.
But I am going to go back to the La Croix. Doug, can you give us a little background of where we were on La Croix before it went to the YMCA? Because I know we were losing more money than $30,000 a year.
Yeah. La Croix was losing about $80,000 a year before the Y took it over. And then when the Y took it over, we started off paying not only the $30,000 in water, but also like $15,000 or something in equipment and some other expenses. And then that contract ran out, that, that part of it came off. And then two years, I think it was two years ago, or maybe last year even, Mr. Cole and Mayor Hanks signed an agreement with the YMCA to extend their contract out. They had a grant that was coming due that they needed extended, extended out period of knowing that they were going to have the course under the YMCA. And that contract was negotiated. And it came through council and it came through all the proper channels. But, and that's when the, it was a 16-year agreement with three five-year extensions.
I think one more thing I want to touch on here real quick is the fact that the YMCA is paying for upgrades on the, the sprinkler systems out there, the irrigation system out there right now. And when that is in, is there any anticipation for what the watering charges will be after that? Is it going to decrease? Have there been any?
There hasn't, there hasn't been any research done into that, what the efficiencies would be if they're changing out the sprinkler systems and updating it. There hasn't been any work done on that, no.
I, I think, I, I see where you're going with this, Chad, and I appreciate that. But I think that if we get into where we're going to pull $30,000 a year worth of funding and end up getting the La Croix back, if we were losing $80,000 back there.
I wasn't going there with that at all. I was trying to say is there's a different way to fund the water.
And we are looking at that right now.
I know, but I mean, I don't, I'm not by any means saying that we should give it back to, or take it from the Y. By no means, I'm saying it's coming out of the Meadowbrook, it's money that can be used to improve in Meadowbrook right now. There's some other way we can fund it so they can improve Meadowbrook. I'm not saying we should have.
And I think that's all going to be lumped into the.
Okay. But I'm just making sure clear, I'm very much in favor of the Y having La Croix links. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Just a different way to fund it. That's all I'm asking.
Okay.
That's, no, by no means.
All right. Well, that's kind of what I was getting out of this. So, all right. Thanks, Jim.
Okay. Mr. Nordstrom?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have to have a conversation with this microphone button, anyway. The question I've got has to do with the aquatics. The, that division over there, specifically on the Horseman pool, I wanted to thank Doug for bringing up the idea of, of the heaters up in that pool for maybe using that for an alternative source, or funding on a different source, I should say. So I just wanted to say thank you for that offer. And we'll see if we can continue moving forward with that. Then the major question that I have on this whole water funding or swimming center questions is if we go on a, I'll just say a smooth track and everything is kind of put in place, will we be needing to do an adjustment to your 2013 budget? Or will that have an effect in a future budget, say, for example, 2014 or something like, like that? Just, just the preparation stages of, of a swim center once, once the council is able to make a decision there?
Actually, the 2013 monies that are from the 2012 are, is for the fieldhouse. And then the 2014s for one of the pools and 2015s for one of the pools. That's how the money's allocated right now in the process. So I would say that the, if the process stayed in that order, we probably wouldn't need any more money to fund any of the pools till probably 2015.
Thank you. That addresses my question.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Sasso?
Just wanted to clarify, as Richie alluded to, Doug's looking at a change and being able to allocate at CIP funds. And I, I think that was very impressive, looking at the potential that Horseman would be rebuilt and looking at a need and offering that, the funds for that up. I thought that was really good because otherwise sinking money into something that is hopefully going to be rebuilt would have, everybody would have been looking and saying, "What do we do?" So anyway, thank you, though, again.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I would just like to say that I think we, are we official on that August 30th date yet, Pauline, for Horseman, for special meeting? So we might have to get creative. Okay. Because those first dates in September weren't good for a lot of people. So, okay, well, stay tuned to your email. You might have it go to your phone. Just if it comes from me, you'll want to read it. Okay. Lon, did you want to say something?
I wanted to make a couple more comments. First of all, I appreciate your time listening to us. And I think Councilwoman Doyle, one of her questions was, she kind of prefaced it about whether there are any significant events that changed our budgets. And I would say, for us, the two biggest things that have influenced our budget the last, this year and next year is going to be the mountain pine beetle program. So I do want you to keep that in the back of your mind. We're going to present a, kind of a summary of what happened this year and, and some recommendations of how we'd like to, you know, continue with the program if we do. And so that's, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Doyle?
Lon, do you have that, where do you have that budgeted for in the 2013 budget?
Well, we have a, we, we have now 19 separate budgets in Parks and Recreation Department. And we established a, a urban forestry department now, which has our urban foresters salary in it, as well as 25% of six of our Parks Department employees, to, to help with that mountain pine beetle program. Now, if we do not utilize those six employees for the mountain pine beetle program, we will likely hire at least a couple of seasonal employees to do the inspections. And we'd like to start those inspections very soon, probably in September, no later than October. Because we don't want to get out there in February like we did this year. It's, it's just way too late to, to inspect 3,000 properties in, in that short a time.
In the consolidated version, where would that be? Like it just?
It would be under the general fund section.
But other programs, professional services?
It would, it would be split up amongst many line items.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else you want, gentlemen? Okay. Well, thank you for enlightening us tonight. And let's.
For your time.
Sure. Let's see. Mr. Barbir? Any questions for Community Resources before Jeff gives us some highlights or about his concerns? Mr. Laurenti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just had a question because I saw GIS fell under this particular area. And I wanted to ask you, is there, this is just a general question about the GIS area, but is there a preference when the city is needing GIS services? Is there a preference? Or I assume we do it by RFP, most of our GIS services?
We do what? Excuse me?
Most of our GIS services are, are done through RFP process, or?
We have a GIS division that has, it has three employees, three FTEs.
Okay.
It's partially funded by the city of Rapid City as well as Pennington County. Variety of services as far, as far as helping emergency services, mapping, Rapid Map is the application you're probably most familiar with.
Do we use contractors at all for maps and that type of thing that we would do, aerial maps?
Aerial photography and that type of thing, yes, we do.
Okay. So it's contract, that is contracted out?
That is, yes.
Okay. And do we use local GIS contractors for that?
We go out for RFP. We do, the last time that we flew was in April. We flew the city of Rapid City for aerial photography, and we did use Fugro. They, they did have the best proposal, and we did go with them.
Okay. I'm, I'm familiar with them as well. So that was my, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? Okay. Jeff, you want to?
Sure. The Community Resources Department is made up of six different divisions, but a lot of it tends to be very service oriented. With IT, HR, GIS, risk management, code enforcement, and community development, we don't have a lot of the big capital expenses that some of the other departments have. If you take the interdepartmental charges out of it, and you just say, "What do we actually spend in our department?" It's about $3 million a year. And about 1.8 million of that is on salaries and benefits. So, so it's a lot of service. Both, our customers are both the public, like in HR, for example, as well as other city departments, you know, that IT, for example, would, would serve, as well as HR, obviously, would serve other city departments. So it's really a service oriented department overall. We spend a lot more money on salaries and benefits than any other particular line item. The only larger capital expenditures we do have are generally in the IT division. One of those Pauline mentioned, we're planning on $150,000 of IT's CIP money in 2013 to put toward the IFIS replacement. That should be a fairly large project. IT's role in that, you know, IT will have a fairly large role in that replacement, obviously. The current IFIS system, besides being frustrating at times for end users, it's not very solid as far as the way it runs on the server. And city employees are used to getting a couple of emails every week from IT that the, the server has to be rebooted again. So that's a consistent problem that, that we need to address with, with the new system. Pauline had mentioned that committee will meet again on Thursday, and I have, I will be on that committee. And I'm sure of the new IT officer that we hire in the next couple of months as a replacement for the gentleman that left will probably serve a fairly prominent role on that committee as well. Code enforcement is one of the divisions that probably gets the, the most attention in our department. One of the things that we're doing in code enforcement in this 2013 budget, as you'll see, there's a capital outlay of $20,000 in our department. That is to replace a vehicle that one of the officers drives on a daily basis. We are replacing a 1995 Chevy pickup in 2013 that has officially its useful life is spent, I would say. So that, that'll be exciting for that division. Another large. Yeah. That's, that is, that is a tight budget. You know, people like to talk about code enforcement and the, the need for it and how proactive they'd like us to be. But that is really a tight budget. So we, we do the best we can with what we have. Another large variable that we have every year in our department is the community development block grant money. At this point, we have a number in there for 2013, but we really don't know what it is. It's one of the things that when Congress has their budget hearings every year, they threaten to cut it drastically. So far, they haven't done it. We'll have to, we'll have to wait and see. That's something that we wait. I believe we got our award letter in January last year, because that year runs April 1 to March 31 for the CDBG money. So we'll have to, we'll have to wait and see. Part of the issue with that is that we are allowed to use 20% of whatever that grant allocation is to administer the program. So that pays some of the salaries in community development. We'll have to see exactly what that number comes back as, what the grant is, what 20% of that number is. And then we may have some issues with, with staffing levels in community development, what we're able to do as far as funding those positions. So it's just, at this point, it's an estimate. That's a variable that we can't do anything about at this point.
Alder Nostrom?
I've got a question for you, Jeff, and probably even more so in the area of Barb Garcia, if she is here. Thank you. Just be a standby. The question will have to do with demolition of houses that are in the area of being condemned. And I apologize, I'm not seeing that line item in there. Do we have that, you know, within your budget in the Community Resources budget?
We do. At this time, we have a $25,000 allocation per year for demoing houses. The fund itself actually has, I don't remember the balance off the top of my head, we budget 25,000 a year. The, the fund itself actually has considerably more money than that. Part of the issue with demoing houses, and I won't pretend I'm an attorney, but is the, the long process and the due process that a homeowner is allowed before that is allowed to happen, I think is more of an issue than funding. If we actually get to the point to demo a house right now, I think we can fund it.
And so if I'm understanding the numbers correctly, at the current rate, we would be able to demo about two houses a year?
I think that'd be pretty close, yeah.
I may have some other questions, but thank you.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Come on. This is the second year in a row I've sat in this side. I think the, the ward mate from, the junior ward mate should have been sitting on this side so I could look at you. Jeff, I just wanted to know where we were at as far as the, the in-vehicle computers for our code enforcement guys and their new technology for them to make their jobs a little easier. Because if you look at those numbers, you're looking at roughly, oh, 1,100 or so calls per person a year, or not calls, but inspections per person. And, you know, I have to give them credit for doing a very difficult job because I know in, in my specific neighborhood, they are not the most liked people in Rapid City. So just let me know. I'd just like to know where we're at as far as technology for them.
That happened in, in 2012. It happened this year that we funded. It happened this year that we funded laptop computers and mounts for them in their vehicles. So, um, I think that, that they really like that. I mean, that some of the, the things that they need to look up, um, as far as internets, internet access and database access, um, that they can do in the vehicle without having to return to the office nearly as often. I, I think it makes them much more efficient, and I think they really appreciate that. But that is already funded, and those are already operational.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
And you are correct, the, you know, Code Enforcement officer, when you think about every single complaint, you've got somebody that, usually, some of it's proactive work. But when you've got a person that made a complaint and the person that was complained about, somebody's going to be upset with you on every single transaction, so, um...
And sometimes both of them.
Yeah, occasionally, occasionally.
Anyone, um, uh, Mr. Sasso.
Just, uh, again, the, with the funds for demoing approximately two houses per year, uh, how many have we demoed on average? I guess, just...
When was the last time we demoed? It's been a long time.
Uh, it's been probably a year and a half, two years ago. And I think we did two houses that year.
Yeah, so a couple of years ago, and we did two houses then. And we keep budgeting twenty-five thousand a year, but I know, like, in 2012, I, I don't believe we have any plans to use it at this point. I don't know that we have anything that's close enough in the due process to allow for it this year.
Twenty-five thousand, all the abatements. And that's all we did, 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 we did. It was all together.
Do you want to expand on that? Because it might answer some other questions.
That the abatements, that we, the abatements come out that we do for Grass and Weeds is that Barbara's saying come out of that same account? I didn't realize that.
It all comes out of that one account. So, all of the snow removal, grass, any abatements we do for miscellaneous garbage, all of that comes out of that twenty-five thousand. That year, we did the two demos, we almost went over the twenty-five thousand. Luckily, it hit right at January, so we... That has covered it up until now. There is significantly more in the account that we could ask for a supplement on, and it was...
Hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Hundred and twenty-three. So, there's plenty, if we could get the approvals to demo, we, we have the money.
Uh, I have a question about that. We're, um, um, we're on a committee for looking at substandard housing, about what to do to increase Code Enforcement and all. Was this money, could it also be used, like, to board up houses? Or does that have to come out of something else?
We have used it.
Yeah, it has been.
Okay.
For that, on a couple of occasions.
So, I would just say, because of our work on that committee, we're hoping that we will be able to be more proactive, and we'll actually be using that money to, to help neighborhoods get stronger.
Uh, Mr. Nordstrom.
Uh, switching to another division within, uh, Community Resources, the IT. Um, Jeff, have you got, uh, maybe, maybe, because we don't have a director in that position right now, um, have we got some maintenance plans for our software? Some software real, realignments, uh, that we have to do, or purchasing new software? So, um, we're just keeping everything rolling along as we are right now? Because I know some of our, I think it was alluded to earlier, that some, some of our software is expiring, uh, or running up to a deadline, and we no longer can maintain it. So, um, are, are, is that in the IT budget planned right now? Do we have a longer-range plan for the IT, uh, software maintenance?
You know, the software maintenance is a, is an ongoing process, um, for IT. The software that we use specifically is more, uh, that IT pays for is more on server-side type, you know, type software programs. When you're talking about, like, a point-of-sale system for the Parks, or, you know, for Parks and Recreation, for example, that would come out of their budget, not ours. We would be involved in the, uh, you know, to, to help them install, but, um, and to maintain. But they would be, they would pay for that. But we do have ongoing maintenance, obviously, of keeping our, you know, our servers and our infrastructure, um, you know, and keeping that all maintained and in good working order. And, and I think the IT budget, uh, for 2013 is appropriate. The, like I said, a hundred and fifty thousand that Pauline was talking about that we're going to pay toward the IFIS replacement, that's going to come out of IT's allocation of CIP money for 2013. And that, that will be a major project. Um, the IFIS, because of, you know, the general administrative and financial side of it, it touches everyone in the city, you know, if nothing else, on the purchasing side. Anytime we enter a purchase request, goes through that system.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is, is this another area, and I'm not sure if you're the right person, Jeff, again, on this question, but is this the area that we're going to be discussing about, uh, interdepartmental charges? Um, Jeff gave a good example about what point-of-sales, uh, issue could be, and, and our IT people are serving that, servicing that. So, this, does that fall into this area of interdepartmental charges?
Well, you're right. IT, for example, at this point, receives a lot of interdepartmental charges because they charge other departments for their services. But, for example, what Pauline's talking about doing by eliminating general fund to general fund, right now, I believe IT charges the Police Department about two hundred thousand dollars a year for all of the, um, services that we provide them. If that, if general fund to general fund goes away, then PD's budget comes down by two hundred thousand. IT's will go up by two hundred thousand because it's a balance. And, you know, maybe it's a better idea that, that way, you'll see what you're actually spending your money on, and you'll know what IT actually costs the City of Rapid City. So, I'm not against doing that at all. Uh, it, it just will change, you know, it will change the budgets, um, within my department because we do receive a lot of interdepartmental charges.
They, they think that's a good argument for it, for, uh, removing it. Um, thank you, Jeff. I'll yield the floor.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, thank you, Jeff, and all your supporters for staying late. Compass. Kellen. Hi, Kellen, and welcome.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Kellen off the top of? Before he enlightens us on his, uh, needs or concerns? Oh, go ahead, Ms. Doyle.
Um, just to let the, the council know, the entire Compass program budget for next year was a, an unbelievable stab in the dark. Um, not coming from that field, that profession. Uh, Kellen definitely straightened us out when we hired him. And we're continuing to make adjustments. However, coming in when he did versus when the budget numbers were being prepared, there is a shortfall. So, I can tell you right now that we will, um, not today, but we will be coming to ask for forty-nine thousand, one hundred and five dollars to make up the difference in where we're at versus what we need for next year. And that's factoring in, um, we, we haven't hired the, the support staff yet. We don't know if they're going to have dependents, you know, to, uh, be, consider it for benefits, salary, et cetera. So, there are some other issues to, um, maintenance on the building that wasn't considered when we, when we did that. So, if you have any other, um, more specific questions, Kellen's definitely the numbers man to ask. But, um, just to prepare you for next week, we definitely will be asking for that. Thank you. And since Madam Chair has left, we'll go to Chad Lewis.
I don't have a question.
Why'd you hit the button?
I was trying to turn it off so you wouldn't be speaking anymore.
Does anyone have questions? Any questions for Kellen? Okay, then we'll reframe. Kellen, is there anything you would really like us to know heading into, um, this next week and a half as we kind of pour over the things that we're, we're learning here today?
Well, I have provided the Compass Committee, which includes, um, our two council members, Councilman Doyle and Councilman Roberts, uh, with a more detailed breakdown so that they can share that with you during the process regarding some of the areas that were significantly either missing from our budget or underfunded. The three big areas that I wanted to address, you know, in our budget was the fact that we are under some significant training requirements to follow the standards that are set out for us by the federal government and required by our ordinance. And so, we needed to beef up our training budget for next year. We will try and use, excuse me, as much money as we can this year out of our relatively generous budget to get some training, especially for the new staff auditor. Looking at the potential candidates that I have, we will be needing a lot of training to bring these individuals up to speed in the areas of operational and compliance auditing. We do have some very strong financial audit candidates, but lacking in other areas. So, we're, our intent is to use as much as we can this year out of our budget to offset the need for significant training monies next year. But we are under an eighty-hour-per-auditor, every-two-year requirement. So, our ongoing training needs will be similar to that of the Attorney's Office. Secondly, it is generally accepted in the auditing community that, one of our standards being auditor competence, we have to have appropriate backgrounds, education, and abilities in all areas of audit. If we find that we engage in an audit project where we have some significant shortfalls but need to complete the audit, we have the ability, under our ordinance, to hire some outside consultants or some technical experts. And we had no money funded for that for the next fiscal year. So, I have added some money for that. So, our three big areas of concern were training, uh, contingency money, if we needed some outside technical expertise, and then the fact that we do have a building that we are responsible for, and we had no contingencies built in for that. And I've already had an air conditioning issue this year. So, fortunately, we had the money this year, but it was not anticipated for next year. So, if you have any more specific questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, my question will be about, uh, a product. Is there a timetable when we're going to be seeing a product, um, coming forward as a, as a, what? Presentation or something like that? We'll be seeing something? A plan? A product? What, what, when do we get to see some, some information from this, uh, division? Or, it's actually, it's not even a division, is it? It's, it's... Yeah.
Okay, uh, thank you, Councilman Nordstrom. I'd be happy to answer that. We're referring to ourselves as a program.
Okay.
Since there's a whopping two of us on staff. Uh, well, there's one now, but we anticipate hiring a second staff auditor. I think the ordinance change will change the title of the program to the Compass Independent Audit Program. So, no, we are not a division or a department. We are, as the, as the, as the ordinance has set us up, we are in a program that reports to a committee that reports to a city council. So, I look at us as the one and only agency that you, as a city council, have. Um, in terms of a product, as you know, the end result of all this work will be audit work and audit reports. The ordinance requires us to have an approved annual audit plan before we begin conducting audit work. That plan will be forthcoming at the end of the year to the audit committee, and then presented to this council in January to begin our audit year. The committee is discussing, and we will discuss at our next audit committee meeting on August the 20th, a way to start audit work this fall. So, we, we're not circumventing our process, but we want to begin some, what I call cross-cutting issue audit work that will touch on a variety of issues across many departments and allow us to actually use the audit resources that you have given us for this year. Uh, it does not take two auditors four months to produce an annual audit plan. So, it's my intent to get us started on audit work beginning early this fall. But we need a process to do that, and we will be discussing that in August, and then bringing forward to the council our recommendations as to how you approve this early audit work for us. So, you will begin to see work in progress. The difference between what we do and what all the other departments do is that we are a recommending organization. The standards we operate under require that we conduct our work to obtain sufficient evidence before we come to you with findings and recommendations. In order to do that, we will vet all of this through the committee first, and then it will come to the city council. So, the end result of our work will be reports on findings and conditions, recommendations for improvements. And you should begin seeing those early next year if we are allowed to begin audit work this fall.
The next question I've got in, has to do with interdepartmental charges, again, is, it, I'm noticing in your line item, it's going down. Uh, so, is that going to be continuing? I guess I'm looking for, maybe Pauline, is it? Nothing there?
None.
Nothing.
But... Oh, okay, I'm, I'm on a, on a wrong line, sorry. Okay. So, we're, okay, wrong line.
Anyone else have a question? Mr. Roberts.
Won't make you look bad, Chad. One thing that we have to remember, I think, on this, and I, I'm hoping that, that Chair will agree with me, is even if we do add that forty-seven thousand in, there's a lot of money that was going to be turned back on this budget. We're way under budget this year. And even if we fully fund it at the numbers that we're looking at right now, it's still going to be about a ten percent, little more than a ten percent decrease over last year's budget that we approved. So, I think that even with us asking for more money, we're staying well within what we budgeted last year for this. So, anyway, that's just my comments. Thank you.
Alderman Laurenti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I had a question about, uh, and, and I don't know if this is premature or not, but it, it seems like it's thirty thousand foot level to me. But sometimes I'm wrong. But, um, measurements for success? Because we know where the costs are going to be approximately for 2013. What are, what are the benchmarks for success for this program? What will we measure? What would be financial impact, or, if you can speak about that?
I can't speak about it for 2013 because we don't have a list of approved audits. What our goal is, is to participate in the budget process as sort of similar, but yet different from the other executive branch agencies. Once we have a list of approved audit plans, we will be, we will be able to put together some kind of indicators as to what we expect to get as far as results. So, keep in mind, we don't actually, we can't actually make cost savings. We can't actually make improvements. We can simply do the research, provide the evaluation, come up with findings, make recommendations that, if implemented, we would expect to see either increased efficiencies and effectiveness or reduced costs.
I have one last question, Madam Chair. Along those lines, um, now it's just escaped me. And it was a good question, but, uh, oh, actually, um, a lot, when you say audit, I mean, I come from a finance background, so when you say audit, I'm thinking, uh, purely numbers and, and finance. But, and maybe that's not exactly what you mean, so I'm going to ask a question on that. But it seems to me, um, is there a, a measurement of, of processes for departments across the board? I mean, will that be part of it as it begins to, as your vision of it? Um, that, as it looks at processes and possibly time, um, factors and how they, you know, just steps in a process in, in areas where we might be spending time in the multitude of processes that the city has?
And that's a great question. I think you've started down a good road with this more performance-based budgeting. Now, departments actually have looked at what should be the appropriate outcomes, not just outputs, not how many potholes are filled, or how many road miles are built, but actual outcomes against departmental goals. We will look at that in trying to develop the audit plan for next year. Do departments have, some departments have more appropriate measures? Are there, is there a need to look at individual measures within a department? Part of our goal is to conduct the audits that provide the most opportunity for improving city operations and for reducing the risk that city resources are used in an inappropriate manner or wasted or abused. And the presentation that I gave earlier to the department director sort of outlined the process that we will use in develop, in taking our risk assessment model and employing it between now and the end of the year. We will be looking at a whole variety of factors, talking with all kinds of city employees to get an idea of where should we, as a two-person audit organization, put our limited four thousand man-hours a year? And, and we want to put them into the most appropriate areas that have the biggest return. Problem with this new program is, for us, both of us auditors will be coming from the outside. We are not familiar with city processes, so we are spending the next few months getting familiar with that as quickly as we can. So, we're going to rely heavily on the departmental directors and their staff to point us in the right direction as to where we need, uh, to be looking.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Alderman Sasso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you for your, for the information. And I guess, uh, one of the things, if we happen, if we have an idea, like, for instance, uh, vehicles and looking at purchasing used vehicles instead of new vehicles and what that would save, the process for us to get that to you would be?
You're talking about input from council members. You're talking about input from council members?
Yes.
Part of our risk assessment model will be to make inquiries of council members and find out from each of you individually what your priorities would be for us to look at. We'll put that all in the mix and see sort of, as I've been describing it, what rises to the top is the most significant. You know, anecdotally, I can tell you there are three or four major issues floating around that are common to many departments, and I hope that those rise to the top and we can start looking at the really important issues here first. We, we also will want to look at, at issues that touch as many departments as possible rather than going in and spending a lot of audit resources, you know, focused on a very narrow area. Those types of audits can come down the road. This is a new function for Rapid City. We want to get the biggest bang out of our very limited resources. So, yes, you will have an input into the process, each of you individually.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Are you asking me to look at that, or?
Well, it would be more efficient, that's for sure. I have supported this. I think it's a great idea. It's, I know things always take longer than you think they're going to take. And, so, hopefully, by this time next year, we'll see that the program is on, well on its way of paying for itself, maybe not have paid for itself, but that we can see the, you know, that we're going in the right way. And I heard great things about you, Kellen, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Well, and I look forward to working with all of you and getting your input into what we should be doing in 2013.
Thank you. And now, we're saved the best for last. I know Mayor Quaker, I don't know if y'all have had an opportunity to meet him or not, but he's here to answer your questions and... Does anyone have questions? We'll just do it the same way we did with everybody else. Don't want to show any special favoritism. Does anyone have any questions for the mayor before he speaks? Okay, mayor, you want to tell us what you have concerns about, or whatever you want to tell us?
Really don't have a lot. I think the thing that probably affects the council the most is, is that the recommendation that Pauline and I made was to decrease council contingency from 200,000 to 150,000. And that may be something that you might want to look at. I think past track record of the spending of the contingency fund backs up the idea of taking it to $150,000, but I wanted to make sure that that was on your, on your radar screen. The other thing is Black Hills Council, local governments, they had, they had been receiving a $30,000 allocation, and Pauline worked with them, thank you, Pauline, to identify what the true costs were. And their allocation is going to be approximately 17,500 for next year. So, that represents a, a significant savings. We haven't been able to determine the save, we're working on determining the savings on this next thing I'm going to say. But, when I, when I was elected, I turned in the, the 2010 Chevy Tahoe to the police department. And the police department, in return, gave me, or gave my office, the 2007 Chevy Impala, which I drive only for, for city business, and only on very rare occasions do I, do I take it home. That has resulted in, in significant savings, we believe. But, we're, we're working on trying to figure out what that is because the, the fuel has, the fuel was assessed to different places in previous times. And so, there is a, a line item that started in 2009 for, for fuel in the mayor's office, or 2008 for fuel in the mayor's office budget. And some of it was assessed there, and some of it was still showing up on the, the police department and other places. So, we're, we're, we're taking a look at that, but just so you know that that has resulted in, in insignificant, insignificant savings. So, other than that, there were a few questions that were brought to our attention. One is, what proposed events supported the change in professional services from 2011, actuals of 35,000 approximately, to the approved 2012 budget of 106? I wasn't sure of that answer, and, you know, as you know, the 2012 budget was introduced before I took office. Clearly, the previous, last year's council and I own that budget in the sense that we, we did proceed with it for the most part, but there were some things in it that we weren't aware of. The reason that, for that change is, is that in 2011, there was apparently not an allocation to LifeWaste, and it is included in the budget for 2012. Do you have anything to add on that?
There was actually a budget in 2011. However, the school district did not invoice us for that, as they have in the past. We've always had to have something to be able to issue the check with. And so, it's not out of the, in my mind, it's not out of the realm of possibility if the school district's listening now, says, "Oh, we have an invoice, so we need to do that to pay it." And I think that would probably be the appropriate thing to do anyway if they requested it because it's part of a matching grant for LifeWaste. Where the state puts in so much money, the school district puts in so much money, and the school, or the city puts in so much money. So, I will precursor it with that.
And then the other question is, what proposed events supported the change in other expenses from 2011, actuals, 11 actuals of 65,000 to approved 2012 budget number of 200,000? And the answer to that is, the council contingency dollar amounts only show up in the budget number and not actual expenditure. So, there, there wasn't a lot spent in the, in the previous year.
Pauline, can you, how much money's left in our contingency from this past about?
I think all of the contingency is still available for the council currently.
So, we don't get to?
That was 200,000?
So, we don't get to add that to our new? Even after a few years, you have quite a party.
No, it just gets absorbed back into the general fund cash balance, whatever hasn't been spent.
Okay. Questions for the mayor? Alderman Lewis?
I'm not sure if this is pertinent to the 2013, but going forward, we kind of discussed trying to get a motor pool together for the, all the city vehicles. And I know we don't have anything in 2013, but maybe just kind of, as you would say, put it on people's radar for 2014, trying to figure out if we can get something together to... We kind of, can you mind, you know what I'm talking about? Kind of discussed this before.
I do, yeah. And thank you for bringing that up, Chad. Chad and I went on a ride-along with Rich Sagan a few weeks ago, and we, we rode the, the new Coolidge North and the Coolidge South routes. And during that, during that discussion, we talked about the fact that he is spending approximately $120,000 or more on mechanics, and he's at the, he's at the mercy of, of various third parties in order to do that. And so, he was going to be working on, on a, on options for taking that in-house. The challenge is, is that because his, his entity, Rapid Transit, is heavily federally funded, that those, those employees would have to be dedicated to the federally funded entity. And so, there would be an opportunity for sharing, but it would some, it would, it would be something that would have to be analyzed. And there has been discussion over the years on, on doing fleet management. And it, it, it gets put into the too-hard box often because of the startup costs. But I do think that, as it relates to Rapid Transit, that is something that we can do, perhaps either as a supplemental sometime later this year or next year, or as part of the 2014 budget. Good question.
Any other questions or comments?
Come on, Laurenti, you don't have any tough questions?
Where's the stationary fund budgeted?
You want me to answer that?
I know, I'm kidding. I'll just have to put that out there.
Okay. Ron, you look like you're on the verge of questioning him.
Tired.
Okay, yeah. I think we...
He wants to second the motion that we adjourn. That's what he's leaning in for.
Oh, well, you know, that isn't part of our process, is the adjournment. So, Alderman Doyle, do you, we had another thing added about a motor pool, a question for future motor pool for Rapid Transit mechanics. I guess our plan will be that we will mail out, email out, you know, the categories. If you think of any other questions between now and next Thursday night, we'll be having the investments come forward, fire... Public Works, yes, a lot of time for Public Works. This infrastructure will be a big issue. And so, if you have any more questions, then please send them, you know, the first of, by Monday because it's hard for staff, they have their regular job, and then they have to jump through hoops to try to answer questions for us. Any other? August 9th, I believe, that's the next Thursday, same time, same place. Also, I believe that one of the churches is going to make us dinner Monday night, this council meeting, prior to council. They're bringing dinner, and I think, again, in two weeks after that. So, anyway, that was very generous of them. And thank you very much, and please feel free to call me or email me if you have any questions. All right, we've had a first and a second from Scott and Robert.
Where were you, Sasso? I thought you were leaving with the microphone.
I got this.
Everyone in favor?
According to Roberts, probably, there's no rules of order.
Have trash, please tend to your trash.